Good to go.
Everybody's in, okay. So I'm being 6:30 and have in Quorum, I'll open the Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, February 17th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Before we open our first public hearing, I'll read in the governor's March 20, March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 17th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance, the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded within 48 hours. You'll post the link of the recording to the town's website and other social media pages. Mr. Romulus is, are you getting a lot of feedback? Is there, can we mute everybody else? Is that what's going on?
Yes, okay. So it looks like, I think if you proceed, we should be okay.
Okay, thank you. Yep, good. So the following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the chair, Mr. Raymond A. Gemmian, the vice chair, Mrs. Jean Guerino, the clerk, Mr. Michael McDonald, Mr. Stephen Geller, and Ms. Astrid Rojas, the associate. During this meeting, all votes of the planning board will be taken via roll call. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. And Ms. Jennifer Burke, the committee on economic development director, Mr. Elijah Romulus, the assistant town planner, Mr. Azu Antonero, the town engineer, and Mrs. Leslie Doh, the office administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing, allows for public comment, we ask to use that feature to ask your question by listing a name and address of the question. The chat will go to the host, and they will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. The first public hearing that we have that I'll open is 14 Summer Street. It's DA Bar LLC. This is a major site plan continuation for renovations and expansion of a mixed-use building to include a restaurant on the first floor and apartments above. So I could turn it over to you, Mr. Romulus. I know you gave us an update on the project. And Mr. Silva sent in his responses to our last meeting. We received that for the record. I don't think we received any other correspondence except for Mr. Silva's letter addressing the issues that we raised at the last meeting.
Yes, that is correct. So they, the applicant updated the site plan. Once they kind of go over the, the updates, they can go further in depth, but they did address some of the concerns regarding fencing and lighting for the site that the board had brought up. And it looks like we also have our town engineer on. He did review it. So there was some, he'll be there to be able to explain some of the engineering side of the updates as well.
And so at this time, can we turn it over to Mr. Silva and his team and the applicant? Is anybody on from, I can't see, I'm sorry.
I'm, I am here. Larry Silva, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So there is no other correspondence? There's no response to anything that we submitted? There's just, that's what we submitted, correct?
There was a, we did receive an email from the town engineer at 6:00 PM this evening. I can read it into the record if everybody would like.
Go.
It just says, Elijah, the applicant has satisfactorily addressed my previous review comments with their submission of revised site plan and stormwater management report received on Thursday, February 11th via email. I have no additional review comments that could be adverse to the approval of the site plan, should the board elect to approve it. Regards Azu Antonero, P E P L S.
Okay, thank you. All right. So that sort of comes after what we had submitted. We had submitted on February 10th, a comment response letter. I do have one correction in that letter, and it's also a correction on the plan. If you go to the very end of that letter, I think that what we were attempting to do is to say that there was 10% open space instead of 90%. So that should have really said 90% there. And on, in the lot coverage on page two of the plans, should actually say 90% instead of 10%. We just reversed what we were actually posting. So there was no change in the lot coverage. So it's like 15,000 inch square footage versus 17,000 square feet, the actual area. The deed was 18,000 square feet, but we were not getting that through survey. That was one correction I did want to make. I don't know if you want me to go through comment, each comment, but basically, the first several comments were related to the stormwater, which we addressed, and Azu has indicated that he was satisfied with our responses. They, we provided the emergency overflow. We did the evaluation. We, we put a note on the plan about the removal of the material down to a certain elevation. We also did an evaluation of stormwater mounding and showed that there was a 0.6 foot of mounding and that the adjustments were made for that. And also that we had, as we had indicated, that we, in comment number three, was that we, we did to the extent, maximum extent possible, comply with stormwater regulations as if it were a new project. We went as much as we could for an existing location. The other comments were related to the lighting, which we talked about a lot last time. We have changed it to the light poles to the 15-foot poles with 90% cutoffs. The wall packs would have cutoffs at 70 degrees. So that was addressed. There was also some questions, which I'll, I'll wait on this one about the height. I'll go to the other ones. We, the fence, there was an area in the back of the site that there was concern about whether or not we should be providing some screening to the neighboring property. We have added fencing in that area. That's like the last four spaces plus that green area on the right side. So basically, the area that's, that's adjacent to the, the house at Tulaken Terrace, which is really the one that would be directly impacted. And aside from that, I think that the only other two issues that were still out there were, if there was any other comments about the, the building height, which was, would have been the architectural issue, but except to say that we, he would have to demonstrate that he was below the 40-foot limit, which we believe he is, when he, at the time that he goes for building permit. And the other item, though, was related to, like, our client identifying materials in color that the, that the planning board had asked questions about at the last meeting. I think that kind of summarized where we are at this point.
Mr. Silva, did you say they provided the materials and the colors?
I had not seen that information. My client is on, on the line, I believe, and she could answer those questions directly.
Sure.
It does not look like we have the client on this call this evening.
She's not?
No, not to, I don't see her on the list.
So we can, we can come back to that question. Is, does the board have any questions for Mr. Silva?
Um, yes, one please. Will there be identifying parking spaces for the tenants? I didn't know.
We, we have, we have provided the spaces for the restaurant and for the tenants. And, but there is, if you do the calculations, there are a need for 10 additional spaces, which would be absorbed from the downtown spaces. There's a little, the little column had some, and there's others nearby.
No, but I knew. Identified. You know, so if the tenant comes home, does he have a parking space?
We have not, well, we have not identified that they would be listed as tenant-only. I guess that's, I, I didn't know if that was going to just be a management issue for the, for the owner or not. You know, part of it is time of day, obviously, and obviously, the critical time would be evening if the restaurant is open. I would say that one, one space for each apartment probably should be indicated as resident parking only. So I mean, I think we could add signage to that effect. Either, either painted on it, on the, on the ground, or a sign indicating resident parking only for five spaces. That gives them at least one space, you know, for each one of them, you know, during any time.
Yeah.
So. Would that be something that we could add to the, if the, if that's what the board would like us to do, we could add that, you know, to the final set of plans at the time of endorsement?
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Burke and Mr. Romulus. So the, we're okay with these, the two zoning infractions of, of parking and open space, because they, they pre-exist, and in the case of parking, it's actually improving because there's less, there's, there's less seating. And in the case of open space, based on the calculations we asked Mr. Silva to do, it appears that pre-existing, there's only 10%, and going forward, there's, there's only 10%. So we're not creating any problems with future projects, right? This is just because this is a redevelopment, and these conditions exist already?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thanks. Any other board questions for Mr. Silva that I see?
Larry, you're muted, but you said you're going to come back to the lighting. You didn't.
I, I did come back to the lighting. I indicated that we would go with the 15-foot poles with 90% cutoff and that the wall packs would be 70% cutoff.
Okay, I didn't hear you say that, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, that's, I had said that. But what I said was, the building height, I didn't have a specific number for you, but said that the architect would have to demonstrate to the building department that he was below the 40-foot limit. Because remember, before, we talked about it as possibly being 45, but he has to show he's below the 40-foot limit.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to mute myself for one second and just try to call her, see if I get, maybe she forgot to go online. I'm not sure.
Sure. Are there any other board questions while I wait for Mr. Silva?
Oh.
Nothing for me at this time.
Sorry, Michael, go ahead.
I said nothing for me at this time.
If there's no more board comments at this point, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak, Mr. Romulus? Can you see anybody?
It does not look like there's anyone in the chat that has indicated it, or anyone raising their hand or using the raise my hand feature.
If there is anybody from the public that would like to raise their hand or send a chat or speak, we could do that now. So, Mr. Romulus, just, can I review the, the things I had written down from last time with the lighting, the fencing, the open space? I thought we had kind of agreed on a color palette, which was like the Benjamin Moore historical colors or something like that. Wasn't that what we kind of gave for direction?
Uh, yes, you did give it for direction. The applicant hasn't responded to it. I didn't, you know, mention while it's agreeable that, you know, there should be certain color palettes for the downtown area. The planning board isn't the design review board. Hopefully, at some point, that can be a legislative, you know, action, but we can't, you know, require anything from the applicant.
And then the outfalls where I just, for the emergency. So those are the five things that I had from the last meeting. Mr. Silva?
Yes, I just spoke to my client. She is in Maine. Her husband is potentially going through emergency surgery as we speak here. So she obviously wasn't able to participate in the meeting. She did give me the answers, saying that the color, the colors would be like similar to a Benjamin Moore Hancock green, which is in keeping with the historic district. So there would be shades of that. And she said that she would be, she priced out trying to use the, the hottie plank, and it was just too expensive, but she does plan to use a high-end vinyl on the, on the exterior.
Okay, and then we really have no control over that, Ms. Burke and Mr. Ronus, because it's not under the special permit, correct?
Correct. It, Mr. Chairman, so one aspect, if the board does plan on voting tonight, Ms. Dora raised my attention, was that the applicant has asked for a landscape plan waiver. So that would be something that the board would have to also vote on.
Is that in our site planner view? Because this is just a site planner view, right? So do we require a landscape planner view by an engineer?
Uh, I believe so for site plans.
I thought, I know we do for subscriptions, I know we do for special permits, but I didn't think we had that criteria for, especially for site plans, do we?
I can take a look, if you give me a second.
I mean, we want it to be landscaped and shown as the plan, right?
Yeah.
Yes, they do show landscaping on the site plan.
I think I'd be comfortable granting the waiver in this case, just because the limited scale landscaping on the site to begin with.
Yeah, Mike, I don't, I don't think we have to.
I mean, there isn't much landscaping there.
The, we have a site, we have a special permit area for mixed use, but this is not special.
As long as, as long as the site plan shows landscaping features, you're all set.
Right, that's what I thought.
Even better than.
Yeah.
All right, so do we have any more discussion, Mr. Antonero? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing, and it's a lot of backfeed, so now it's better. All right, so are there any more questions, or is there a motion on the problem? Motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll move to closing the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. McDonald, a second by Mrs. Guerino.
Yes.
Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Okay, so again, it's roll call vote. So I'll start with Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Guerino?
Yes.
Mr. Gemmian?
Yes.
Let me ask. Okay, so the, the project, we've closed the public hearing. Just in our deliberation, are there any additional, additional conditions that we'd like to add, whether it be related to the parking discussion we had of the color scheme or landscaping, anything like that, that we'd like to add in addition to our standard conditions that we'd like to discuss?
I'm fine. I just would like to clarify that we are asking for landscaping features, but not a plan. That's all.
As shown on the site plan?
Right.
And did we ask for one reserved parking space for each residential unit? Is that what we asked for, Mr. Gemmian and Mr. Guerino? Is that what we're looking for?
Yes, yes, yes.
Just one or more than one, or what was the, like, not that I tuned out, but I didn't really hear what we ended up with there, huh?
Yeah, it was just one.
Yeah, and I, and I think I, I think I'd like to see it as a sign, not something painted on the ground.
Yeah, in case of snow.
Okay.
One for each tenant or just one?
One for each.
One for each unit.
Do we, do we want to stipulate that the color will be Hancock green, or do we want to give her Hancock green? Or, you know, from the Benjamin Moore historical palette, like we discussed last time, to give them a little more latitude? Or how do we want to handle that?
Let's, we can't actually stipulate that, though, can we, if I understood correctly?
That's correct.
Right.
We can, can we say we appreciate you using the historical? Historical, and then if she decides she doesn't, doesn't like the green, she can.
I think you've made, I think you've made it, I think you've made it clear in your minutes. You can't put it in your decision.
All right, yeah, all right. Okay, and so those, the, the lighting's been changed, the landscaping is shown. Besides the parking and the lift fences have been added, the parking, what was the other? I'm losing my mind. What are the two additional conditions we want?
The assigned parking with, for each tenant, for the, with, with posted sign.
Yeah, and there's one more, isn't there?
And the lands, the landscaping, you know, as, as indicated on the plans, but it says it'll be determined by landscape contract, so that's fine.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the project if there's no more discussion on additional items?
I'll make a motion to approve the project as a major site plan with our standard conditions, along with the three other conditions of the parking spaces with a sign. The landscaping is indicated on the plans. And I think that was it.
Okay, so those two additional, good, okay. Do we have a second for discussion?
I'll make a second.
So a second by Mr. Gemmian?
Yes.
Any discussion? All right, so I'll take the roll, roll call. Mr. Gemmian?
Yes.
Mrs. Guerino?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I may ask. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Ready to go?
I was muted. Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, so.
There are a lot of people that want to mute me. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, so in our packet, we did, we did receive minutes, February 3rd, 2021. Mrs. Guerino, what are the corrections?
I think they were okay. I thought I saw something, and when I went back and reread them, they looked all right.
And does, does anybody have any comments or questions on the minutes? No? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of 2-3, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 2-3, 21.
I'll second.
Second, so a motion by Mrs. Guerino, a second by Mr. McDonald. Any discussion? So I'll start with Mrs. Guerino.
Yes.
Mr. Gemmian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Let me ask. Okay. I think that's it, unless there's any board committee or any different reports.
I'd just like to thank Elijah for his time and service here with us. He's been a huge help. So I'm sure we'll definitely, definitely miss him being around.
Thank you.
You stole my thunder, Michael.
So everybody eat their whoopee pie now? Is that what we do?
Isn't Grubhub going to come to the door now and deliver everybody?
Yeah.
Hey, Elijah, you know, if, if you have nothing to do on Wednesday nights, you can still tune in.
Uh, yeah, maybe. No.
If I see Elijah's face on these meetings on Wednesday nights, I'm going to personally drive to Taunton and slap him.
There's not a slap feature in the chat, no?
I'll make one.
You can't slap somebody on Zoom?
You know, you know, I said it in the, I said in the email that I sent out to everyone, but it has really been great working with you. You're a very, you know, intuitive and, you know, a board that knows what's, what's going on, and it makes my job easier. So, you know, it's, it's great working with you guys, and if I cross paths with you, that'll be great, but it's been a pleasure.
I liked how you changed "interesting" to "intuitive" that quickly.
Elijah, good luck.
Yeah, good luck, Elijah.
Good luck.
Yes.
You'll be okay.
All right, so the next meeting, do we, do we just have Broad Street? Is that all it's on, Ms. Burke?
No, I believe we have a couple of other things, right, Les?
We have oil field modification request.
Yeah.
And we have theory wellness, the odor control.
Yeah. So it's been a year since we approved their special permit, and you had wanted to see them back regarding their odor control issue. So we haven't received any complaints. We, Les has checked with Board of Health and Building Department. So we'll, we'll send a letter to Theory Wellness, if we already haven't done that, to remind them that they'll be back before the board on March 3rd to discuss that issue.
If, I know Broad Street was delayed in going before the ZBA to some. Will that, will that 20-day appeal period impact our ability to move forward on that night? Or should we plan on moving forward that night, or is it most likely going to be continued?
Um, I, I can't, I don't really know the answer to that question, Pat. So they're meeting with the ZBA on the 24th. Let's just say that all the stars align, and the ZBA has all the information they need, and they make a decision that night. You know, I'll probably be able to do the decision the next day and get it filed, you know, within a day or so. And then it's 20-day appeal period, you know. We will, it's likely we would know if somebody's going to appeal. It's very unusual for an appeal to happen, and you not know about it in advance. So, or at least have an idea that somebody might be appealing in advance. So like, if we go to the ZBA meeting and there's absolutely no public there, it's probably a 95% chance it's not going to get appealed. So I could probably, you know, let you know where, which way it's going to go. Now, if we go to the ZBA and the ZBA continues it to their next meeting, I would argue that the planning board should continue it. I don't, if the, if the board, if the ZBA closes their hearing and makes a decision, I think I would be comfortable with the planning. I don't, if the, if the board, if the ZBA closes their hearing and makes a decision, I think I would be comfortable with the planning board continuing their conversation on it. But if the zoning board of appeals doesn't continue, it doesn't make their decision, I think the planning board should continue there.
Alright, and I guess that's fine, but legally. And, and I, I don't know, just some, legally, can we continue if the appeal period hasn't expired?
Yeah, yeah, because they've received their approval.
Alright.
It's just, and, and they can proceed at their own risk. I mean, if they didn't have to get a, a decision from you, they could go to Steve and he may issue, it's at Steve's discretion. He has in the past issued building permits at someone's risk.
Alright.
Of an appeal.
Alright, just wanted to make, and then we have old field and theory wellness.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Do we want to hang out, or do we want to adjourn or what?
I would just say that um, after Elijah leaves until um. We find a suitable replacement, um, I would ask that you go easy on me.
Only in, only in public.
In public, in private, whatever. I just. We'll have a lot on my plate, so. What was that, Azu?
We'll see about that.
We promised to not be any hotter on you than we were on Elijah. How's that?
Oh, okay, thanks. Alright, that's all.
Alright, good, um, I was gonna say goodnight. The motion to adjourn?
I'll make.
Second.
I think three people made a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I only seconded.
I think, I think, uh, just, just go with Ray made it, and uh, that's fine.
Alright, so motion by Mr. Jemian, second by Mr. Geller?
Sure.
Any discussion? Bastard, this is how meetings should be, not like first when you join us. We probably drank a bottle of wine after.
I was, yeah, I was looking forward to more of those. I mean, not excitingly, but just. And I'm starting to see that it's not always like that, which is nice, too.
Alright, so um, Mr. Geller?
Yep.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Garina?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, so. Good luck, Elijah.
Appreciate it.
Good luck, Elijah.
Good luck, Elijah.
Take care, be well, and be safe, all.
You too.
You too.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.